I'm looking down at this and it says that I'm on, so yes, I am. This is a regular city council meeting in the city of Rockport for July eighth, twenty twenty five. I will ask you to stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before you have a seat, we are, like a lot of people around the state, grieving for people in the central part of our state that lost hundred and nine people that we know for sure that died. And twenty seven people from a camp of a bunch of second to fourth grade kids that included twenty one kids and six counselors and so forth. So when asked what they could get that would be beneficial to them from all sorts of churches and other groups, they said, just pray for us and give us time to see what we need next. So we're going to do a prayer specifically for those people in central Texas before we get started. You pray with me. Our God, my Father, Lord, we come to you on behalf of parents who have lost children. And children who've lost parents and and the families of a hundred and nine people who died from flooding. And God, we don't know why these things happen in our world, but they do. And we know that you love the people that were lost. You love those children that were lost. But God being a parent that loses a child has got to be one of the most grievous things that can happen in a person's life. We pray especially for those parents that lost kids. We pray for each of the people that were involved in trying to find all of those folks, the first responders, the people off the street who went to help. But God, above all else, we pray for peace for those people in their hearts. We pray that you would touch them and let them know that you're standing beside them and that you love them and that you care. We ask that you would watch over them and keep them safe in everything we do. All these things we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. Have a seat. Have a roll call to establish presence for quorum. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor here. We are all here and the meeting is called the horn. Citizens to be heard is first item on the agenda. Speak participation instructions are provided in writing at the beginning of the agenda. Texas Open Meetings Act permits a member of the public or a member of the governmental body to raise a subject that has not been included in the notice of the meeting. However, any discussion of the subject must be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a future meeting. And any response to a question posed to the city council is limited to either a statement of specific factual information or a recital of existing policy. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Next item on the agenda ceremonial matters. Have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Now I'll read this and our parks director will come up and get our picture taken and so forth. We we are so proud of our parks people. They were here a few weeks ago getting recognized for being archery experts and doing things that that taught young people, especially and older people do about archery and how much fun it can be and how much work they did to get prepared to be official teachers of archery. So this has to do with parks and recreation in general. Whereas parks and recreation programs are vital components of communities across the nation, including the city of Rockport. And whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, enhancing both physical and mental well-being of those who live near and utilize these spaces. Time spent in nature has been shown to positively impact mental health, improving cognitive function and overall well-being. And whereas parks and recreation encourage physical activity by providing facilities for sports, walking, hiking trails, swimming pools, and other opportunities for active living. And whereas parks and recreation departments are leading providers of healthy meals, nutritional services, and education, their programs such as out of school time activities, youth sports, or environmental education continue specifically to childhood development. And whereas parks and recreation contribute to economic prosperity by increasing property values, expanding the local tax base, boosting tourism, attracting and retaining businesses, and reducing crime. And whereas parks and recreation play a crucial role in protecting our environmental and enhancing ecological health in our community as well as the infrastructure, strengthen community resilience in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural areas preserve the ecological beauty of Rockport and offer vital spaces for residents and visitors of all ages to enjoy the outdoors and connect with nature. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated the month of July as National Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas the city of Rockport proudly acknowledges the numerous benefits provided by parks and recreation facilities, services, and programs. Now therefore be resolved that I, Tim J. Rowe, Mayor of the city of Rockport, Texas, proudly proclaim that the month of July twenty twenty five is Parks and Recreation Month and encourage all citizens to celebrate and support the efforts of parks and recreation professionals in enhancing the quality of life in our community. In witness whereof, I have here and to sit my hand and cause the seal of the city of Rockport to be affixed on this the eighth day of July twenty twenty five. And parks and recreation folks of your area, all of you want to come up and listen and get your picture taken someday. At the middle there someplace. We're gonna have to see the seal. All right. Next, the city of Rockport was awarded the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association for a period of October twenty twenty four through the end of September twenty twenty five. And going over the material that they sent me, there is something that it says about our folks that did all this work. Says a panel of independent reviewers have completed their examination of your annual budget document for the period beginning October twenty twenty four. We're pleased to inform you that our that your budget document has been awarded the distinguished budget presentation award from Government Finance Officers Association. This award is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting. Its attainment represents a significant achievement by your organization. All of this work is done by our finance department, including the director, Mr. Robbie Sorrell, and we appreciate it more than you know. And if y'all want to step forward and don't have the certificate with me, but I will get your picture taken and let people know that we really appreciate the hard work that y'all do. It's not often enough that we get to say good things to our folks about the work they're doing. Robbie works really hard. I see him going up and down the hall in a sweat really often and stopping long enough to ask him how to do something I'm not pretty sure about. He's always very helpful. But I appreciate him and the folks that that are reading our places like the work that y'all do. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mayor Council.
Thanks for the massive work. Hard work, absolutely.
They've set a very high expectation and now so we'll see Robbie up here every year, I think.
Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. The following items may be acted upon in a single motion, no separate discussion, or action on any of these items will be held unless pulled at the request of a member of the council. Council wish to remove either of these items? If not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda thread.
I have a motion. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, I'll call a free vote. Ward one. Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It is unanimous. Next item on the agenda. Consider the appointment of the city of Rockport City Council Mayor Pro Tem to serve from June twenty four, twenty twenty five until the canvas of May second, twenty twenty six. This was an item that should have been taken care of back right after the closing of the election back in May. But we were in the middle of trying to move, wanting to move, hoping to move, or whatever, and didn't get around to that particular point. So we're doing it today. What's your pledge, your counsel?
Mayor, I move to approve the continued support for our Mayor Pro Tem, Hatman, to continue in that role for another year.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other nominations? If not, I'll declare nominations closed and we will vote on the nominations ahead. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Next item, consider the presentation in an act on acceptance of annual comprehensive financial report. Mr. Sorrell.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Okay. They did that once before. We're still getting material. All right. Going on to, this will come back on the agenda in the future. Item number seven, consider the presentation of the first report from Fries and Nichols and recommendation from the Impact Fee Advisory Committee to the city council regarding the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, updated impact fees for water and wastewater utility infrastructure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have with us this evening Ms. Stephanie Nices from Fries and Nichols to go over that with you. She has a PowerPoint. We're not voting on anything tonight. This is just a presentation to prepare you for the decisions to be made after the public hearing on July twenty second.
How are you?
Hi, good. Oh, we have to go all the way through the report, I think. The slides are. Because, can you all hear me? Yes. Well, as we're scrolling, as Carrie said, I'm Stephanie Nices. I'm an engineer with Fries and Nichols. And so just here tonight to talk through some of the information for the water and wastewater impact fee update. We have a few things on the agenda, just some background on impact fees for those that were involved in the last process. And then briefly going over our land use assumptions, the capital improvements plan, and then the actual impact fee calculations. Happy to answer any questions as we're going through. So just jump in as I'm going through each part here. Few more pages. I think you all have a copy of the report too that she's kind of scrolling through now.
I was watching these roll by noting that you weren't talking nearly as fast as this was going on.
Right, yeah.
And if you did, we wouldn't understand a word you said.
We'll test my vision too because I think I'll only be able to see it in the little corner there. But there we go. Yep, so I guess we can go down. This is the agenda kind of. Did we wait for it to restart? Can you all see the slides on your side or? No, okay.
Yeah, it's coming back. Nobody ever wants to be the first person to get up and do business at first meeting a brand new building.
Bound to be some.
So you have our sympathy.
This isn't, this isn't too bad. Very nice facility, so. Go backwards. Um, I think one, one section. Yep. We can probably start here. This is just the overview. Yep, that's good. So yeah, as I said, just a few slides on the project background and then we'll go over the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and then the impact fee calculations. So we can jump one more. So just some basics. Make sure we're on the same page with impact fees. And so an impact fee is a one-time charge assessed against new development to pay for costs associated with newer expanded infrastructure needed to serve growth. So keywords there are the new and expanded infrastructure. Impact fees can only be used to add or expand capacity within the system to serve new customers. So anything related to operations, maintenance, anything like that is not impact fee eligible. It has to be due to growth and adding capacity. Impact fees are developed based on requirements in chapter three eighty five of the Texas Local Government Code. It is a pretty prescribed process that we follow. So you'll see kind of the process here, and that's dictated by chapter three ninety five. And then really the intent of impact fees is just to allow for additional revenue to pay for those growth-related projects, which then reduces the impact of that new infrastructure, new facilities on your existing customers. Next slide here shows the impact fee process. So there's kind of five components. The first three are the technical components, and that's what we're going over in this presentation. And then we do have some more procedural meetings down at the bottom there. But first one is developing land use assumptions. This is where we determine our existing customer base, estimate our growth over the next ten years, and then develop water and wastewater demands and flows. Then that leads into our capital improvements plan where we use those land use assumptions to then determine what projects are required to serve that growth. And then the impact fee calculations is where we look at kind of how utilized each of those projects are, determine our growth in service units or living unit equivalents, and then calculate the maximum allowable impact fee. So we'll get into each component there as part of this presentation. But then the bottom part, the stakeholder meetings. We did have various meetings with staff throughout this project. We had three impact fee advisory committee meetings as well. And then we are doing one presentation tonight to city council. And then the next step is doing that public hearing, as Carrie mentioned, the next meeting on July twenty second. And we have been advertising for thirty days on that. And then the last process is to adopt the updated ordinance to officially set the new impact fees. So moving right along, we'll jump into the land use assumptions. Go to that next slide. First part of land use assumptions is identifying the service area for water and wastewater service. So hopefully you can see on the map here, that red outline is the impact fee service area. It includes the city limits as well as the existing water and wastewater CCNs. Those are certificate of convenience and necessity. Basically, the area that the city already has rights to serve. And we also did extend it a little bit to the west there outside of the city limits where you're already serving existing customers. So anything in the red there is the impact fee service area. That's where you are allowed to charge impact fees. So then our growth projections, since we identify that service area, we calculate the anticipated growth within that area. So we looked at five-year, ten-year, and twenty-five-year projections, reviewing historical trends, current development interest, and identified anticipated growth rates. So you can see we use two percent annual growth rate for the next five years, reduce that to one and a half percent for the five to ten years, and then one percent per year out to twenty fifty. So for impact fees though, we are just concerned with the next ten years. So you can see that ten-year growth identified about three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven people in that ten-year window. And then moving to the water demands and wastewater flows. So taking that growth and then translating that into into what water demands and wastewater flows will be new to the city. I'm reviewing again historical water usage and wastewater flows, selecting per capita's and peaking factors to determine the chart there on the left, my left, shows the average day demand and the maximum day demand projections over the next ten years. And then similar on the wastewater side, we looked at average daily flow and then peak wet weather flow. So those are the conditions that we size infrastructure for. And so it's important to kind of quantify what that growth will then have, what impact that will have on both the water and wastewater system. Next up is the capital improvement plans or the CIP. On the water side, you can see our map here shows our proposed improvements in red. All the black lines, if you can see that, are existing water lines and facilities. So using that, you know, water demand projections and the growth that were identified in the land use assumptions, we evaluated the water system, looking at pumping capacity, storage capacity, as well as conveyance throughout the system, and identified nine projects, all pipeline projects, to convey water throughout the system and make sure that we're maintaining appropriate pressure with those increased demands. As you can see, yeah, nine projects there, all proposed in red on the map. And then kind of same thing on the wastewater side. The next slide shows that map. Again, kind of utilizing those growth projections on the wastewater flows, assess the system for pumping, treatment, conveyance capacity, and identified seven projects on the wastewater side. We have three pipeline projects, three new lift stations, and then two expansions to existing lift stations. Again, shown on red here on the map. Any questions on the projects or CIP before we move on to the impact fee calculations? So the actual impact fee calculations, why we're all here. This slide kind of shows the the basic equation for impact fees to calculate the maximum allowable impact fee per service unit. We have the impact fee CIP cost. And we apply or deduct a credit to those costs and then divide by our growth in service units. So we'll go over each of those three components. But basically, the impact V CIP cost is the portion of costs that we anticipate to be utilized over the next ten years. So we utilize a hydraulic model and some planning criteria to look at each project and determine how utilized they'll be based on those projections. And we apply a credit as mandated by chapter three eighty five to kind of discount a portion of those costs and then divide by that growth in population or service units. So next slide kind of shows some of those calculations. And so this, these are the eligible costs for the water projects. You can see all nine projects listed here in this table. The first few columns are those utilization percentages. So kind of important to note that ten-year utilization. That's basically how utilized we think each of those projects are going to be. Anything that are project addresses that are existing system deficiencies or serving existing customers, we can take that out. That's that first percentage column. Anything that is beyond the ten years. So, you know, we looked at the system all the way out to twenty fifty, sized some of those projects to make sure that you, you, when you put a project in, it's going to be sized for longer than just the ten years. But we can include those costs in the impact fee calculations. So we look at what percentage will be utilized by twenty thirty-five, and then that's how we get the ten-year utilization. We look at capital costs. You can also include financing costs. So you see both of those components there for each project. And then we take that ten-year utilization percentage, multiply that times the total project costs, and we get that last column, the impact fee eligible cost. So for water, it is fourteen point four million dollars on water for the total eligible costs for this ten-year window. We have a similar table on the next slide for wastewater. And going through the same calculations, you can see our seven projects here. Again, we look at the system, kind of look at those flow projections, see how utilized each of those projects will be over the next ten years. Apply that percentage to the total project costs, including capital and financing costs. And we have that impact fee eligible project cost of thirteen point four million dollars on the wastewater side. The next component of that equation, this credit calculation. And so as I mentioned, three ninety-five does require that we apply a credit to those capital costs. And really, the intent is to make sure we're not kind of double charging with impact fees and through rates for those same projects. So there's two kind of methods that that are laid out in chapter three eighty-five that we can utilize for the credit calculation. The first one is a little bit more detailed, looking at kind of each project and specifically how they're funded, making some assumptions about future water rates and sewer rates to calculate a specific credit. Or in the alternative, there is number two, which is what we utilize for this study, applying a fifty percent credit to those eligible costs. So basically, all those numbers that you saw in the previous two slides, cutting those by half. And that kind of takes care of that credit portion of the calculation. And then last component is our denominator of that equation, so our living unit equivalents. If you recall, our ten-year population growth was estimated about three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven people. And we define a living unit equivalent as a service that's equivalent to one dwelling unit. And so looking at recent census data, there's about two people per dwelling unit, which calculates out our total growth in LUEs to be one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four. And then bringing that all together, the actual impact fee calculations here. So on the water side, you see each component, that fourteen point three million dollars, take that fifty percent credit. And we're right about seven point one million divided by seventeen sixty-four. We get a maximum allowable impact fee of four thousand fifty-six dollars. On the bottom of that table, you can see the existing impact fees. So water is only five, six seventy-four right now. And then similarly, on the wastewater side, going through the same calculations, you get a maximum level impact fee of three thousand eight hundred and nineteen compared to your current fee of four hundred and twenty-six dollars. So the last slide here is just some comparison numbers to other cities throughout the state and in the area. You can see kind of a big spread of impact fees for for various cities and utilities. Did want to point out your existing fees are kind of all the way to the bottom of this chart totaling eleven hundred dollars of the current fees. And then kind of right in the middle, the the new maximum allowable fee of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five total for water and wastewater, kind of in the middle of that chart. So I will point out kind of a big range in in the cities in what they're charging. And I will say if cities are on the higher side, they are typically kind of these small to mid-sized cities in a very high-growth scenario. So they have a lot of capital projects that they're building. Construction costs have gone up significantly in the last five years. So that's usually what's driving up impact fees. A lot of those on the higher side are also utilizing that detailed credit calculation. Typically, that results in a higher maximum allowable fee that you're able to charge. And then cities on the lower end of that typically either aren't growing very fast, don't have a lot of capital improvements, and/or are close to build-out. So they already have a really robust system that has capacity for the future. And those existing projects just didn't cost as much as they're costing right now. So you can include existing projects in your impact fees and recoup those as long as there's excess capacity for future growth. So with systems that have already put in that infrastructure, you know, five, ten years ago, they're still collecting impact fees on that, but the construction costs just weren't as high as, as, you know, new projects that that cities are building now. So it's kind of the spread. But really, as Carrie mentioned, next week during the public hearing, you'll kind of hear from any citizens, but it's really policy on on what you can charge up to that maximum allowable fee. But it's um really policy on on what you can charge up to that maximum allowable uh fee. I think that was it for my slides, any questions or any other points we want to discuss?
All right, can folks hear me? Okay, um the items that you put together uh that were projects that we planned on doing between now and it was twenty fifty, is that right? Was that the 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 date for this is?
Um so it's twenty thirty-five for the impact fee eligible projects that we did look out to twenty fifty.
But we were looking up to twenty fifty of anything uh in in and uh on on your side of things uh there, what have you. So it looks like we've got some distribution lines and some lift stations and things that we would all expect to see in here. Um when you sat down uh trying to look at at everything, I I guess you had to look at what might we need between now and twenty fifty, is that uh what we're looking at? Um was there, was there any thought to uh another replacing or major refurbishment to the wastewater treatment facility or anything? And that these large, big scary projects that that might be coming down the line, such as participation in a desalination facility or things of that? I mean, I'm thinking from now to twenty fifty, um it it and it looks like we've got, again, some some lines and lift stations and normal stuff. But it, was there any large projects like that uh uh thought through and and uh do you think we're gonna need any of that kind of stuff, Ryan? Hate to keep asking you, what are we gonna need in twenty forty-nine, that's a little tough question, but but should we be building any of that type of large, very expensive projects into this?
So so kind of where we were at, and you know, on the water side, we we look to reach out to the unincorporated areas that we do not serve but are annexed in. Um but we have a lot of open land out there and you know, and we we need to start serving some of those people that already, you know, are annexed in into the city of Rockport. Yeah, I I mean, we kind of looked at some of those things, but we're half of our capacity at our sewer treatment plant. And we're never gonna have more customers if we don't bring sewer to them. So what we can actually serve right now is not a whole bunch of, we have to get the utilities out to them. So I think this approach and uh of getting the actual infrastructure out there, then we'll start having to win the next twenty, thirty years and and maybe longer. I don't know how fast we will grow, but that will be the second step. And and you might want to, Stephanie, talk about how often we can add projects.
Where this was like a ten year window, so 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 another council, not very far in the future, ten years or what have you, can look at some of these larger uh projects that we, like I talked about. Uh if if things change a little bit and then go out, we better add one of those and they were allowed to do that every every ten years, is that?
Um every five years is when impact fees are required to be updated. Um the new changes um that were just passed in this last legislative session um kind of limits, you can't increase impact fees sooner than three years. But you have to at least recheck them every five years. So you do it five years, even though we're looking at a ten year window to kind of, yeah, check to make sure our land use assumptions are still tracking. If there's any other projects that have come up, you can add those at that time. Um and then I will note kind of two points, um yeah, the wastewater treatment plant capacity was good for our ten year window. So that's really um the capacity that we're showing in this for the impact fee projects. Um again, I'll reiterate that it doesn't really include rehab, maintenance, anything like that. Because we can only include projects that are due to growth or adding capacity, so that you're likely still gonna maybe have some of those rehab or maintenance type projects. As your infrastructure continues to age within the next twenty-five years, um but those won't be on the impact V CIP.
Which we're doing that now, so we don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
We're we're in that process, but yeah, we're, our wastewater treatment will support what we have on this plan.
Yeah, and for some time to come, it's.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One hundred percent.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
So Matt, keep it, I'm sorry, Council members, and keep in mind, we have a different CIP list that has the rehab and maintenance on it that we're funding through. Um our our fees that we charge, that our fees were set based on. So those are gonna be the rehab items. We're twenty years behind on this CIP list, so we're starting kind of at step one. But if we review it every three years or five years, it's gonna be an ongoing rolling list, should be forever now, so.
That's that's what I was thinking, it it, you know, this is, this is just the first step. And if one of those large projects pops up, you know, the population goes up significant, we have the ability, the legal ability to go in there, okay. We've got to add, we're not rehabbing, we're we're gonna add something uh that's a new project to support the growth only, so. Just for future councils, as as long as they have the ability there to to make a touch, to zig when they need to zag there and get it done.
It's a rolling list and will be forever.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add something to that, Vanessa? I just wanna, I mean, to my understanding, we're s- we are legally binded to update this every five years to use those impact fees, the way that we're supposed to be. So being twenty years behind, can you imagine all the impact fees that we're, we could have accumulated in the last twenty years now that we're behind? So I think it's gonna be really important for future councils to make sure that they're doing this study every three to five years. To make sure that we can use this and utilize it the way it's supposed to, so we can impact the the part of town that doesn't have the utilities right now. So I just wanted to make sure that was sent there.
And this isn't a magic bullet, I mean, it is gonna be a pot of money that we can use to build new things. But remember, we're only building in the amount of money based on the capacity of usage, so. Yes, we can use these impact fees to fund a portion of items, but it's not the, it's not the silver bullet. There's other places that money's gonna have to come from to um to construct these big projects.
Okay.
It's a pot, but it's not the whole pot.
And it sounds like, you know, if if, you know, that some of the folks that aren't being currently serviced, like you mentioned there. Um if we'd looked at them over the last twenty years, maybe there would have been some dollars there to get some, get some services out to them and wouldn't be quite where we are today. So this is, I actually, I think this is great, that it's it's being addressed properly now and and we're getting ahead of the game a little bit. Uh and thank you, uh Carrie and your team and Ryan and everybody for looking into this, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question, um can you kind of give us an explanation of why the approach was taken to do the standard fifty percent credit versus that complex calculation? With kind of looking at Rockport?
Yes, so um a lot of cities do the fifty percent, especially if there's not a lot of motivation to charge something higher than that fifty percent. Um it does take some additional effort, so um probably somewhere around maybe thirty thousand dollars would have been added to the study. Um Freezer Nichols typically subs that portion of the project out with a financial consultant that kind of looks at um more on the money side of of where the projects are funded. Um so um knowing that there was a lot of ketchup already with some of the low fees going into this. And we didn't think it was maybe worth it to do that extra step to spend um the extra effort to develop that study. Knowing that there was likely gonna be a pretty big jump going just to the fifty percent. Um I think if there is in- interest in that, you can certainly do it as part of your next study, just to have have that information.
And how long uh from start to finish does the study take?
The study that we did or if we did the?
If you did the complex calculation.
Yeah, I can kind of go concurrently with um developing the CIP, which is um what we do. So typically, impact fee studies take maybe nine to twelve months. I will say some of the noticing requirements have changed with the new rules, so that might extend it out. Um if you impact or increase your impact fee, now there's an independent financial audit that's required, as well as like some uh longer noticing for some of the public hearings. So that may extend a little bit, um but it does take um quite a bit of time with um the upfront technical work and then all of the kind of stakeholder meetings and um notification and.
I definitely think this is a good starting point, um but I think we should probably make some consideration to think about using the complex approach next time. But we have a lot of catching up to do and I understand that, we need a good starting point, but you know, by year three from um. You know, this one applying, we may need to start kind of considering that well ahead of that five year mark to get ahead. See if it's the out approach that we need to take, um just to bring more revenue in from that. Thank you for that explanation.
So you're you're correct, we will need to go into that, but remember, when we got here, we're twenty years behind. This study costs us twenty thousand or more. It's more than that, and so um I I'm guessing probably forty, I guess.
Um for the full study with this CIP development and everything, I think we were at two hundred thousand?
Oh, two hundred thousand, so um sorry, I was way off there. And it's taken us three years to get to get to this point, um we've been working on it, but we are playing catch up, we need to do this. Um we talked, we have talked about going into street and drainage fees after this was um complete. And so it's, it's just gonna be a rolling process, we we're not picking. We did pick one over the other, we picked one because it would be simpler for us to get back on track and to tabulate and to keep up with while we're catching up, so.
Kind of simplified answer, if I'm understanding right, that, thank you. If if municipality is of the mindset that we need to get more than fifty percent, we've got a lot of ca- a lot of infrastructure, whatever. It at that point, it probably behooves you to use the other calculation that costs more money. Is that, is that a simple understanding of of the two choices?
Yes, that's typically what I've seen cities do. Um you know, the majority that I've worked with utilize the fifty percent unless they're wanting to charge something more. See, see, some of those on the higher end of that chart, they're typically doing that detailed credit calculation because they want to recoup as much as possible through impact fees. And it is kind of a balance of um, you know, uh balancing growth versus um. Uh I don't think impact fees ever um dissuade growth within a system, but that's always a consideration to make sure you're balancing that.
And the cost that that that, I'm sorry, the the cost that you just mentioned there, sounds like a lot of money to me there for sure. Um is that, that's something that we're gonna expect to to incur every five, ten years to do this study? What 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 should we expect as a municipality is a couple hundred thousand dollars every five years is is where we need to be on this?
Um I think that would probably be a good budget number, I will say for this one, we developed a new hydraulic model from scratch, so you could save some there with just doing updates. Um I do think there are other portions of a study, I know in the advisory committee, um a question was asked about water supply and doing some of that feasibility. Um so that would kind of be a separate thing that we didn't do as part of this, so depending on what that scope looks like for each update, you could be somewhere lower or higher depending on.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh I got a few, a few questions for you, uh if you don't mind. Uh kind of touch point on what they were talking about, the utilization method versus the fifty percent method. Uh the utilization method, I did some Aggie math uh on this and it looked like we would be somewhere in 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 that graph. It's gonna put us probably around the thirteen, fourteen thousand dollar uh equivalent. So that would put us on that like dirt or fourth on that graph, which may not, you know, you said it doesn't inhibit growth or development, but I think that could. At some point in time, the development may not happen because of cost. Uh where we're at now, is it developer friendly or is it, you know, is it uh, does it preclude growth? We had to do, we had to do something, uh but are we, are existing customers gonna be subsidizing future growth with this fifty percent uh refund?
It it's hard to know exactly what those numbers are without doing that credit calculation, but inherently by taking that fifty percent credit, you're assuming that some portion of those projects will go into future rates. Um some of that will be existing customers, some of those will be the the folks tying on with these new impact fees that are gonna become future rate payers also, so. And that's kind of what goes into that credit calculation, um but yes, um by taking a some kind of a credit, the law basically uh. Kind of mandates that there's some consideration for CIP projects being done through rates or utility revenues.
And and when we look to the project list, uh I'm sorry, that wasn't meant to be a gotcha question, but looking through the the project list. Uh I don't think any of them are brand new services to, so that we couldn't tie in existing uh existing customers into some of these projects. So uh even though it's a new new water line, newer sewer line, it is servicing some people that may uh. Is enhancing the system that they're already in, so I think, I think the subsidizing some of those things i- is is there, but not there. Um on the water side, you know, if we add seventeen hundred L U Es, that's going to increase our demand from San San Patricio Water uh Municipal District. Uh but there was no cost allocation, or I didn't see it in in the the cost allocation to contractually obtain more water. Is that, can that be found in this fee anywhere?
It's not in this fee, um you could potentially include the capital cost if that's passed on to the city from your wholesale um provider. And we did look at pumping where you, you know, receive that water and pump it into the system, so you're good there. But if there is capital costs that, you know, the line going to that facility or something like that, that's required that they pass along, it could be a project. We didn't look into it for the CIP, but that could be included in future updates.
I I think, I think Ryan, our our capacities are getting to one eighty-eight, but is there uh in this future calculation, you know, are are we gonna need to be? To allocate more water from San Pat?
Uh not based on these projects.
Not, not based on this.
The water projects were more, just like we were talking about, uh serving other places. But also is to, was the demand, they did pressure readings, did the hydrology all over, you know, the city. And they were finding, you know, maybe some places up north to where during high peak demands, they were losing some pressure. So a lot of these are linking water lines, so we have more volume and more pressure all the time. So when we have Fourth of July weekend, we're not dropping below pressures, we're still having the water, that's not the problem. It's uh some low pressure, and I think that's what y'all identified in y'all's modeling reports.
Right, yes, when you increase the demand, um kind of adding that growth into the model is really when we saw some of those peaks. Um causing pressure to drop below the regulatory minimum of thirty-five PSI. So it's a lot of what those pipelines do, just kind of um help fix some bottlenecks, um reduce head loss, keep the pressures up when we add demands.
Help loop the system in.
Exactly, and adding some some bigger trunk lines that that can hold more volume and uh. And and help water quality, that was a big push for us too, was like to get that water circulating throughout the system.
So ba- based on your hydrology models, we, it doesn't appear that we're gonna need to uh obtain more water from San Pat?
Not, not what we were seeing, because it's not the amount of water, it's the, it's the pressure.
It's the pressure.
From San Pat that they, that they promised.
We got the gallons, we just don't have the way to.
And you will kind of need to continue to track, um there are some regulatory requirements for contractual water production capacity that T C Q requires. So as you add connections, um it'll be good to continue to check that to make sure you're meeting those minimums, which doesn't really come from the model necessarily. That's just um, you know, a a state requirement for contracting um a certain number of gallons per connection for water uh production. So gonna continue to track that um as you add connections, but um.
And I think, to add on Stephanie, as we move through this process, we really need to, you know, take a smart approach. We're not gonna run sewer lines when we can't take it at the sewer plant, we're not gonna run water lines when we don't have the water coming in from San Pat. So that's smart approach and how we do it, you know, balanced approach is what we're all gonna do, so um we're gonna keep an eye on that the whole time. So we're just not putting water lines out there to not serve any water. We're we're gonna make sure we we have the ability to do that.
You are required, if you charge an impact fee to provide water service, otherwise you have to refund those customers, so that'll be something that yeah, kind of continues.
When you do a project like this, it it's necessary that you make assumptions. You you look at what the history has been of land use or construction and development and so forth. And rely on that to give you what you believe the likelihood will be that that will stay like that, increase, decrease, or whatever. And I would, I would wager that over the last five years, there's been a substantial change in at least the. Amount of land being bought up with intention for use coming out, which is one of the things I think that council has been concerned about. Every time we do budgets, we talk about, you know, what are we going to do if if these projects come about? And I think probably at three to five year reviews, we would probably be in pretty good shape. And obviously, we haven't been in good shape for the last quite a while, because we haven't been looking at it often enough. But as we see the land use developing, we have got, we have got uh people working on economic development. Where we would encourage businesses to come in with the thought in mind that we're not looking for smoke stacks and like that. We don't need huge water users to come in, we're looking for small businesses and so forth. But there is, I think, a reasonably good chance that we will see somewhat of an increase in some of that over the next few years, because it's been coming for about five now. I like the idea that we can go back after three to five years and and make changes, and so I appreciate that. And and I've always been a little bit suspicious, not of the intent, but of the use of assumptions. We have to guess that this is what's going to happen in the next few years based on what happened in the last four or five. But I, the the going through the material, I will admit, I got about thirty pages into it. I thought, what did I read ten pages ago and have gone back and looked over it again and again? But I, the the study looks substantial, it looks like it's justifiable in what you're predicting. But I did notice that the places with higher impact rates were the folks like New Braunfels and places that are growing extremely fast. Tomball is in Houston, New Braunfels is in San Antonio, Austin. Um and so those obviously would be looking at getting more out of an impact fee because they got more people coming in and they've got to pay for it. But I appreciate the work that was done, I appreciate the assumptions you have to make and and what you're working with, but. Anyone else have another question before we let her go?
I had a couple of questions, sorry. Um just to, they pretty much asked 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 most of the questions that I had, so thank you, council. Um number one, and just to clarify, and I I know I probably read this and I just forgot, where does the impact fee study money come from? Um does that come out of the general fund for the study?
For the study?
Yes, and.
Um we we can reimburse ourselves from impact fees.
That's what I was gonna ask the question.
But we had to uh we had to front the money from the utility fund.
Because we can't, we couldn't use the impact fees until the study was done, correct? So next time we do go into the study, we are able to use it out of the impact fees that we gather, so it's not coming out of the general fund and not affecting ad valium taxes as much as possible.
We'd get caught up.
Yes, okay, and then my second was, I saw that Portland had a a tier one and two. I just wanna know the difference of why they had tier one and two and if that would ever benefit us in the future, so.
Um I didn't personally do the Portland study, um Fraser Nichols did do it though, um so I know a little bit about it. And it it, I believe they broke up their tiers based on location, so um kind of further out of their system required some additional infrastructure, so they wanted to um kind of pinpoint where that those fees would be used for and go. Kind of incentivizing closer in development, we're making it maybe a little bit more expensive through impact fees further out. It could be something that the city looks for, I know that came up in the advisory committee meetings. I will say some like with uh with the um service area and the projects that were identified, um we don't have um very different areas. So I don't know if there would be an obvious split, um just looking at it, but definitely something you could look into in the future if there were certain areas that you wanted to um incentivize growth or or have different impact fees, you can use um some of those differently. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
What's the additional cost of the complex calculation?
Um we didn't receive a quote for this specific study, but in the past, it's been somewhere between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars depending on how how big the system is and um how many projects are being evaluated.
Anyone else? Uh thank you very much. Go ahead.
In your packet, you have the letter from the uh impact fee advisory committee, and their recommendation is to um approve a hundred percent of the fee that has been presented to you here today, um because it's been so long and we've we've got to catch up. So that's their recommendation and staff agrees with their recommendation. Thank you.
Carrie, I have one more question, I'm sorry. Is this the impact fee, do you think there'll be, or is the, is it thought to be collected on the front side? At, you know, at plating, or or whenever a a development's plotted, or when when are we gonna collect these?
Collected at a building permit, at the development phase.
Okay.
Excuse me, we're also, in part of our negotiations, if we have the ability, we're asking for lump sums to be paid upfront as part of their development agreement. Now, everybody doesn't consent to that, but that is certainly something that we're asking for.
If they pay upfront, is there a could be a uh a discounted rate?
There's not a discounted rate, but they lock in today's rate, so if, you know, they don't develop out for three years, they, you know, get the new new calculation or whatever the new rate is, you pay upfront, you get the rate when you pay. So that's the benefit, if we're, you know, if we're upgrading every three years. It's, you know, most likely not a rate that's ever gonna go down.
I think I remember from, I attended some of Carrie's meetings um uh on this subject here. And I think that's what what you guys were explaining was this three years isn't a great deal of time when you're looking at a development, you know, scheduling, what have you. And uh the folks could come in and and again, it's not mandatory, but they could pay the uh the whatever the 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 fee is upfront. We would uh get that impact fee money and it would protect them from if we were twelve months, eighteen months out from another uh increase that they would they would be able to hold on to that lower price. And so that was the incentive for us to get some money upfront and for them to uh to pay a little bit early.
Anything else? All right. Item number eight. Consider award of bid Raw Demo Construction LLC for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars for the installation of paving stones into the sidewalk of Main Street, visitors' kiosk and art installation project site located at nine oh nine Main Street. Ms. Henry.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. Um this is for the project uh just a few blocks from here for, that includes um restrooms and uh art installation and parking for the downtown area. And so uh we are finishing up this phase of the project. The last thing we'll have to do after this is just some um uh ground groundskeeping. And that will have the west end of this project complete. We received two bids and the low bid being from Raw Demo for twenty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-two. This is still within budget um that was previously uh provided.
Question, Council?
So a quick question, I know the downtown merchants are asking, do you have like an estimated time when it's gonna open?
Um the electrical is pretty close, I believe, with Carrie, we were talking about getting that turned on as soon as we can get the pavers done and get the striping done, and the striping's being done by Ryan's crew. I I think it's gonna, as soon as these pavers are done, I think we're ready to hit hard and heavy.
So Councilmember Hatman, we're hesitant to give an exact date, because if you'll remember, we didn't get a quote and a timeline for the entire project, we're quoting out each individual piece as it goes. So we have to get a new quote and we had committed to bring that back to you. You'll notice this one is certainly under anything that would have have to come to council, but we did commit that we would bring each piece back to you since we were piecing it out. So now that we've got the quote, we award it, they have to source up materials, mobilize, lay in things. We're having a hard time getting definitive timeframes because it's it's paper layers, they'll work us in. Um so we tried to have it by Fourth of July, of course, that didn't happen, so we put some porta cans downtown. And certainly, if we have something else big come up, we'll do that again if we're not ready to open them. But we're not gonna wait for landscaping and art and everything to be installed. As soon as we can get into the restroom and be ADA compliant, we will open those up. I'm dodging the question.
I'm going to approve, I made it presented.
Have motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four. Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Item number nine, consider approval of change order number two in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars for the city of Rockport Drainage Improvement Project funded through the G L O Community Development Block Grant Contract Number twenty dash zero six five zero nine zero dash two five two. Mr. Pikkorozzi. It's got your name on it, sorry about that.
All right, can you all hear me? So uh this is a change order number two. It's been months back since we talked about um the discovery of the three manholes on Market Street and Laurel and Live Oak. We we sent it to legal and it's been sitting there for latent defects, but I never brought it to council um because they had moved on to the process. But they're they're asking to get mobilized back and uh start working on some of these latent defects uh once we can get it approved through council. Uh this change orders three locations, um all manhole work to uh to come in there and rehab underground and then bring a manhole up and repave the surfaces at the three locations uh totaling fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um we're looking to recoup this money um uh through latent defects, kind of like Orling Street, so.
Questions, Council? Do we have any update from legal on the chances of of that success?
I I think they're in the. Discovery mode, so they're.
So it's gonna be a while.
Yeah, and this is one of it that's with it, so.
Okay.
Other questions?
I'm going to approve item nine as presented.
Have a motion, have a second. I have a motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one. Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four. Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Item number ten, discussion, consider possible action regarding moratorium on new construction due to water restrictions, Mayor Pro Tim Hatman.
You want me just to go? Okay, um I had brought this up on the agenda, um just a discussion. Um I'm a little bit uh worried about the potential water shortage that is in the near fu- future. Um I just believe that we need to discuss further to get a plan in place as considering a moratorium. Um I don't think it should be a sole um solution, I just think we need a broader plan so we can make sure that we have a plan in place. Um with that being said, um it allows time to also find solutions, develop and implement long-term solutions for water supply and conservation such as improving infrastructure, finding new water sources, or enacting water and conscious ordinances. I do see some poten- potential for long-term negative effects, it can, if not handled correctly it can have long-term consequences for cities' growth and economic development, so I am very aware of that. But this is uh why I wanted to bring up for discussion. Um I just wanted to kind of open the floor and have a discussion about it so we can start moving forward because it's only a couple of years, um according to the city of Corpus Christi, and if everyone has other ideas, great, um let's bring to the table. It's time to start discussing so we don't run out of water and our citizens have to pay that, you know, in just a couple of years' time. And I'll end with that.
Council?
Mayor Pro Tim, I think it it brings up a great point of of long-term planning and what we can do for long-term planning solutions to this. And I don't know when we came off groundwater, uh the water wells for the city. I mean, it's been a while, uh probably the eighties, uh I would say.
I don't have, I don't have that answer, because.
Seventy, I mean, the the water lot there on Magnolia still had.
It's at the Boy Scout hut.
Yeah, the Boy Scout hut, still had tanks there, and that was where the treason plant, I believe, was. But we had the water wells and I, you know, I don't know if that's the answer to 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 do groundwater again, uh we have all the saltwater out there, but D sal is quite expensive. But if there's just something we can start doing, maybe through the uh Texas Water Development Board start looking at alternative sources of water as opposed to just relying on and I don't know if it's even something we can do contractually, if we can start looking for other sources of water uh other than San Pat. But I I think it's a it's a valid point. We don't worry about drainage in a drought, we don't worry about water when it rains, but here we are, uh right now, we're worried about water. Uh drainage isn't the the hot topic because we haven't been hasn't been raining, so. But we need to have those things in front of us and and kind of be, have them maybe in our pocket to think about. So I think it's a it's a valid point to bring up.
May I, may I ask a question, Andrea, or Councilman Hatman? Are we thinking like subdivisions, or are we thinking all new? Uh what's the thought, or have you heard anything?
I don't actually have like a thought or like a whole plan on that, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. And we have a, come bring the ideas up and then we can actually have a deeper conversation or a deeper um plan to go on here. I just know with a lot of things, especially since I'm in council, things have just been kicked down the road. And I just believe that something like this, I don't want to kick down the road, so if it's moratorium or if we come up with biddy or better ordinances, or if we can think of better ways to put water resources I think just think the conversation has to start now and then we need to go forward from there.
I I know this is part of our our drought contingency plan has this this in some of the uh provisions for no new water accounts. So that's been adopted already. If 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 it does go down this road, then you might need to defer to your D C P that's been adopted. And there might be some provisions in there um that we don't have to vote on to, you know curtail, you know, water usage, so just a thought, just wanted to add that.
Ms. Henry?
It's at a water emergency level one or two, it's an option. Keep in mind, there's still, sorry, Art has some stuff to add, the legal lingo, but there's still some things in the stage three that you haven't implemented. So um you can declare a water emergency which allows for this 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 route, but there's, then there's legal parameters surrounding it. But also keep in mind that you still have further options in a stage three that you haven't implemented.
Art, did you need to add something to that, or?
Yeah, um yeah, I I just wanted to make sure, be clear, I understood what it is that is meant by the term or moratorium here. I mean, it's got a, that's that's got a very specific legal definition in state law. Uh and just wanted to see if there, if if I could get some understanding as to what y'all. Words are used casually a lot of times and I just want to make sure that I understand what it is that y'all are are discussing here with respect to that. A moratorium is something that has to be, when implemented, there have to be specific findings as to what essential public facilities are deficient uh in order for there to be a more, what's called a moratorium on development. And moratoriums on development then can only last for a hundred and twenty days uh on residential or ninety days for commercial uh until extended. And that's and 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 both of those processes are gonna become more difficult come September one because they just made some changes this past this past legislative session. Uh so if there's a moratorium as in no more building permits, then, you know, that's a process that we're gonna have to follow specifically, make very specific findings on it um which are, which can be challenged by by the development community. Uh and uh but if we, so we need to have some very, very good findings in order to determine whether a moratorium as legally defined in the local governing code is implemented, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood what kind of moratorium y'all are looking at when y'all use the term moratorium.
Is that i- i- in the the drought contingency plan? What is the finding that we're looking for, what what defines those findings?
So I think I think there's there's a couple of things that 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 we're conflating here. A drought contingency plan is is specific towards water supply, okay? Uh a a moratorium on on essential public facilities is more about that. Do we have, we don't have enough pumping, we don't have the the proper size pipes, we don't have the proper sized wastewater treatment plant. Uh so one is, so on one hand, we're talking about supply, which is what Ryan's talking about with respect to drought contingency. The other side, which on the moratorium side, is what we're talking, is what we're talking about, the facility, we don't have sufficient facilities. And it doesn't ne- just have to be water and sewer. I mean, we cannot, we we could also have inadequate storm drainage, fire and police. Uh there's other, you know, there's a lot of essential facilities uh that that uh that we don't have that that could trigger a moratorium, water supply is just one of them.
Water supply is covered in there, if, if there's not the, the supply to. Potentially be covered, but, but we can also cover it in.
I, I'll tell you.
existing drought contingency plan, without using the word.
Uh, what the statute says is water facilities, okay, it doesn't talk about water supply. Okay, but it talks about water facilities.
I guess I'll clarify, um, so when, when I'm speaking of moratorium, it's for the water. What I'm concerned with, yes, we can think of outside, if we can get water from another area, that's gonna cost more money. It's gonna put more cost onto our citizens and their bills if we have to charge them more. I'm trying to think of other ways that we can do that without having to offset that, charge them if our water supply does do a no down and we have to go out there. So that's why I even brought up the word, um, that's why I'm putting it out there, not saying it's the solution, again, it's not gonna be a sole solution. I think there's a bigger picture that we have to figure out, but that is one of my bigger concerns. If we can, if even if it was a hundred and twenty days or till we figure out something or what the case is, that is the main reason that I, I brought this up. Um, and I went to, I go and, you know, and talk to people about, uh, just what can we do if we do run out of water? Well, we can charge more rates, we can charge more rates, it doesn't mean we're gonna get more water. I mean, that doesn't, that's not a solution for me, and that, you know, so I just wanted to bring up options that we can do, not saying that that's the option I wanna go forward for. But I think it definitely needs to be talked about, and I just want to kinda get council's idea, their thoughts, get your guys' thoughts on it, and kinda go from there. Maybe come up with, you know, just a bundle of things that we can actually look into and then come to a further meeting and get more deeper into the situation.
The, uh, previous council meeting from a month or so ago, there was a individual here, I apologize, can't remember their name, that was talking about. Uh, I believe it was December of twenty twenty, uh, seven or something like that, when this potential, if the drought continued in way, that was a very frightening, um, comment, you know, and. And, uh, you, you, you think about building issues like she was mentioning and other things, but when, when the citizens here turn the tap on, or if they were to turn the tap on and nothing came out. We would be in, in dire straits there, and I think it's our, uh, our job here to try to think ahead of some of this stuff, I think that's a great point. Um, and I was, uh, mentioned, I think Vanessa, I might've asked you, uh, something that, that Ryan was talking about it. Brad mentioned about the water wells here, how long have they been dormant, could they be reused, utilized, and I'm sure that would take a study. But the thing that concerned me was our only water supply for everybody in this room, if you live in Rockport. Um, those of you not on water wells is this, what we're purchasing from San Pat. And we were at fourteen percent in, in the watershed down there, and then some of the numbers that person gave were very concerning. And, uh, when you're, when you're that close to single digits, um, and there was some kind of a potential, you know, uh, within the next year or two of, of, if the drought continues. We turn the spigot on and no water comes out, that is, you know, we'll be forgetting about, you know, development and all kinds of other things if we allow that to happen. And I agree with, with, uh, Councilman Hatman that, uh, um, that I wanna look at, at, uh, alternative supply, we, we talked about, you know, supporting and, and hooking into the D-Sal. Um, maybe re- reopening the water wells here, Ryan, you may have some other ways of, uh, of, of, for lack of a better term, receiving water for the city of Rockport. I think it's a mistake to continue just purchasing from San Pat, they've been good to us, it's e- economical. Um, but if they run out, we run out, and if we don't have a plan B, then we fail the citizens here. So whatever we can do to, to look at, couple of different things here, of where can we get this water from? And then, you know, to also maybe alleviate and get out of some, we've been in stage three, you know, for a while, and it's, it's, although we do wanna conserve water, that's tough on some of the residents. That have special uses and even the businesses and what have you, so I think we should, uh, whatever Vanessa, whatever we have to do, start looking at. Those two options, the D-Sal participation and, um, the wells and, and if anybody else has any other ideas.
Seven Seas and Alice, I know that they're getting up on production, and they have an MOU at the city of Corpus. But I think theirs is like burning, what, five fifty per thousand? Versus like, I think we're what, three thirty or something like that, so it's more expensive. But they are doing D-Sal out of the, by pumping it out of the aquifer. And so they're, that's one potential source, alternative source.
And that's, I believe that D-Sal plant was, was heavily, there, a lot of state assistance on that plant to get it up and running for, through grant funding. Uh, for, I mean, that's fifty million dollars, so, uh, that's a, it's a heck of a chunk for us to bite off. And let's remember San Pat gets their water from the city of Corpus, we can't just be mad at San Pat, it's, and we can't be mad at City of Corpus, they're just the, they're the big brother that operates everything. So, uh, when we talk about San Pat, we're all, we're just, we're the end of the line, and we literally are the end of the line, uh, here in Rockport. Uh, so, that being said, you know, we just. We're obligated to San Pat and the city of Corpus, uh, city of Corpus also gets water from, let's not just think of Choke Canyon and, uh, Lake Mathis, but also. Uh, in Edna, Lake Texana, uh, through the Mary Rose Pipeline, which they don't really factor that lake, which is at a hundred percent capacity now. They don't factor that into the, their percentage rate, that when we show is down at eighteen percent or whatever, that one doesn't factor in. Uh, they also have a permitted, a couple of D-Sal plants and whatever happens there, whether it's industrial water, renewable water. Uh. That's a couple of years down the road for the city of Corpus, but, um, those are also gonna help alleviate some of our, uh, reliance on Choke Canyon and Lake Mathis, so. Those are down the road, I think those don't happen overnight.
And to that point, yeah, they're gonna be down the road, but again, how much is that gonna cost to our citizens that have water? You know, we're already raising rates every year because they're charging us more and more, these other alternative routes are gonna raise. They could be potentially greater amounts than they can afford on their, uh, utilities. So, I mean, with the moratorium, like the reason why I brought that up is, we have all these great ideas we can throw out there. But it gives us time to actually like come up with a plan and think about it and not, cause a plan is gonna, it's gonna take more than just six months. You know, it's gonna be a year, it could be two years to actually implement, that's how government works, we all know, it takes a while to actually make things happen. So, that's the reason I even brought up having the moratorium, just to make sure that we can maybe stop, think, get that plan in place. And then move forward and actually make a difference where it's not gonna cost our citizens so much money. At the same time, we actually have a plan that's gonna help them, so they're not, we don't run out of water, like you said, when we turn on the tap, we don't have any water, cause they don't wanna pay the extra fees or. So that's where I'm kinda thinking of.
Do we have the ability, Vanessa, without the cost for, I know it's a different subject, but these, these studies all cost a lot of money and, and. We have to pass that, and use the taxpayers' money to do that, to look into the, just that one subject of the water wells that we have here, is there a way that we could? Look into that without spending a pile of money and determine if it's even feasible, are they, can you flush them and reeve them, then we've gotta get into a water treatment system? But, you know, the alternative is that turning the tap and nothing coming out potentially one day, having a backup source like that. Can we put together a, a team and, and, and explore that a little bit, again, without spending a great amount and give us some information back to?
We could probably give you some big round estimates, knowing that when it comes down to it, it's gonna be just that, a big round estimate. Again, getting the water out of the ground probably isn't the problem, opening up the wells, bumping more water, it's the treatment. We are not in the treatment business already, so we would have to become, um, we would have to build the facilities. And be permitted by the TCQ for treatment. This, if we're, you know, if we put the magic date of twenty twenty-seven, we're not gonna be ready in, by the end of twenty twenty-seven. Um, I. I think that we could probably look at some options, um, I think we could put together some, some ideas. We probably can get with San Pat, um, we need to see what the recent rains are gonna do to our supplies. Um, and, you know, making a plan is not a bad idea because we're gonna be sitting in this position in three years again, or this time next year or something, even if we get rain this time. Having a plan in place is, is not gonna be a bad idea, so I think us looking at some options could work. Um, if you guys decide to pause development, that, that's certainly your decision. But I think that I can take the direction and run, and I can at least, at least see what's, what's out there. You know, if it's to lay a pipeline to the north to hit into another pipeline, and it's gonna take us five million dollars, we can bring you that back with a big round number. And you can at least know what you're looking at, um, we can, we can easily do that.
Well, the options.
Not easily, but do it.
The options to bring more water here as economically as possible, there's only a couple of ways of doing, I keep talking about the water well, that may or may not work and, and, and what have you. But do we have the option, when you look at Ryan's team and all the things that they have to do, um, is it, what, what do other municipalities similar to us and what do they? Uh, like the, the gas company, we're, we're selling the gas thing, and, and, uh, uh, a, a private company is gonna run that for the citizens here and what have you, is there, are there water companies that will, is that a better way of doing it?
So, water is a statewide issue right now, everybody's out.
Yeah, everybody.
And so, um.
The west half of Texas.
Right.
The east half of Texas.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, Councilman, I, I represent a lot of cities across the state, uh, and a lot of them specifically just on water issues. And most of them, they, mo- most, oh, I'm not gonna say most of them, many of them have just a sole source of supply, whether that's groundwater or through a contract supplier. Uh, you do have some that are, that are fortunate that have a combination of supplies from either multiple suppliers or multiple sources of supply. Uh, being a combination of, 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 uh, ground or surface water, uh, and you do have some that have, you know. And, and you have probably seen some, um, cities that have begun, you, exploring the option of brackish water. Or reuse water, uh, for, but, but that all takes treatment as well. You know, the, I, I believe that. Uh, in, in many of the projects that I've worked on, do secure a new source of supply. Okay, I mean, just a brand new source of supply from idea inception, to the time that water drops into a pipe, you're looking at about a ten-year process here. Um, it's not quick, and it's not gonna be cheap. Uh, the, 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 the thought or the idea that you can find a brand new source of supply. And that it's going to be an economical, or more economical than what you're paying now, is probably a, it is probably not what you're gonna find. Um, in fact, it's probably gonna be the direct opposite of that, it's, it's ac- it's actually really expensive.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but wherever we get more water from, I don't think anybody thinks it's gonna be inexpensive. Um, I mean, it, it, it's gonna be very expensive, I know that's your concern, to try to hold water rates down for the folks here, and I'd like to, to try to do that. Whether we support San Pat and, and Corpus in the D-Sal thing, and that's gonna, you know, assure supply, that might ease things and what have you. Again, I just thought about the water well thing, um, since it's some of it, some of the infrastructure's there, but we, we, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be cheap anyway we go, but if we don't address it. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna bite us, it's gonna bite us, or it's gonna bite another council in the future, when we do have a, a longer drought. Um, cause, you know, the consumption, houses are going, you know, more usage, um, we need to address it now.
Yes, and Vanessa, I just wanna clarify, I'm, I'm not for doing the moratorium as right now, I just wanted to bring us one option. And I appreciate if you guys could kinda take a, a couple of ideas that we all had discussed today and then come back. And we can have a further discussion with more information, more detail into it, that would be something that would be very helpful.
Happy to do that, um, you're gonna have to give us a little bit of time, um, it's not gonna be quick. Especially if you want us to put some big round budget numbers with it, because we're really gonna have to be kind of get, using our best guesses on those things, so.
I think it's important though, that there are options for us to be real cost efficient, review our ordinances, as you just said. Like the low flow, um, appliances required in new developments, things like that, that's nothing, it's gonna cost us nothing. So those are the things we can do right now while we look at down the road where the cost is gonna be greater. Um, is there options to do like new development, um, where they're required to conduct a water use study? And make it part of the like first initial application? Where it, you know what I mean, it's part of the consideration of approval for those developments, how much water are they gonna be utilizing?
So, we typically do that by the assigning of our LUEs, and that's what everything we do is based on. So if you build a single family home, it's one LUE, that counts for basically two people, and that has a specific flow assigned to it. So when they come in and say they're gonna do fifty new houses, we say it's gonna be fifty new LUEs, Ryan takes his flow, and then we get that data. We don't necessarily rely on them to provide that, we calculate that. Um, is it exact? No, because some of those houses are gonna have one person and some are gonna have three or one, two kids.
Is it something you think if it was required to deter new development?
No, not at all.
So.
I mean.
We can do it.
I, I could cut some work for you guys.
If it's already provided from the initial, um, request, I just think that it's, we gotta look at things that are not as, you know, costly to us that we can establish.
So they're not, I, I agree, that there would, are you talking about a binding element? Of saying you want this much flow for your subdivision and when you reach it, you're done? Because they're not gonna get any closer than necessarily we could, because they would use that same count, because they don't know who's gonna go in the home. Now, if you are talking about a, a binding element, that we say you can only, am I on the? You can only use this much flow for your whole neighborhood, and when you reach that flow. You have to stop or you can't put any more families, um, I'm, I'm spitballing right now. Yeah, I mean, we can look into it, we can see, you know, other cities have done these creative things, and so, yes. Yes, we can look into everything. And maybe we can have some in two weeks and some more in four weeks, I'm just saying we can't have it all right away. So, um, if, if you'll give us some time, we'll, we'll research the heck out of it and, um, you know, see what other cities have done. It doesn't have to just be in Texas either, you know, other states have worse drought problems than we do, so, um. I, I'm, I'm happy for us to look into that, but yes.
Can I make a, a proposal or a, a question? Can we have maybe Brian or Mr. Williams, or maybe somebody from the city of Corpus, uh, present to us, uh, maybe some of their future plans?
Their expansion plans?
Expansion plans, or, or maybe, you know, what they're, what they're planning on, so we're not going out and reinventing the wheel, if they're already working on some things.
Well, I think that's one of the things that we have to, we have to explore as a part of all of this. Um, everybody has their hope in D-Sal, but in my mind, we're just using up the next resource, and so there has to be something between here and there. That's gonna be more sustainable, I mean, I guess the ocean's sustainable, but I think that's.
I, I don't know if it's just staff that's having to do this, but maybe we, we, we're gonna consult it to, to, to do that for us.
I mean, that's.
Or, or, or work with Mr. Williams and.
That's, that's who we're gonna reach out to, and I mean, it's, it's not just a, you know, we rely on that water coming down, but he relies on that water from Corpus, and Corpus relies from it, from. Lake Corpus Christi, Oasis River, you know, Choke Canyon, and it, it just continues, so.
Let us put together a big broad element, and then us kinda cherry pick what we wanna, what paths we wanna go down and see how those, um. How those line out, it's not a quick solution, a- and I'm sorry, but, you know, we're gonna have to kinda pick a path and go down, go down it until it, until it dead ends. And, you know, unless you wanna hire a consultant, then.
I mean, I, they're already doing it, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure the city of Corpus is already working on.
Right, so we'll take their info.
Yes.
We're just gonna call them and say, hey, we're relying on you, what's the plan? And we'll, that's option A, you know, option B is open up wells, option C is lay a line to tie into another line, you know, we'll. And then we can talk about which options are our best options and which look the best for us. If that's okay with you guys, and we'll, we'll have some of these quick things, like can we incentivize low-flow toilets, high-efficiency washer and dryer? Um, you know, do we even have anything to, not dryer, but to incentivize those things? And how, how can we do the things now? Also, you have rationing fees in your drought contingency plan. No, it's not rationing fees. Conservation rates in your drought contingency plan, that's an option for you that's still on the table, so, um.
That's one of the stage threes we have not implemented.
That's an immediate option.
And, and that, that's charged to the city of Rockport residents. And, and that, that's charged to the city of Rockport residents.
Yes.
That, that's, yeah, I'd like to.
Put a higher rate on what we're using, but it's to encourage conservation.
And I wanna make sure I understood Art's, uh, comment, uh, on the original statement about potentially looking at a building moratorium. If it was, uh, the timeframe that we would be allowed as a council was very short, it was, uh, uh, did you say ninety days, hundred and twenty days or some?
It's a hundred and twenty days on residential. Ninety days on commercial.
Okay, so if we even.
There's possibilities to continue to extend them.
Okay, but as a, as a city council, the most we could put a moratorium on residential housing, say, would be a hundred and twenty days. At a time, yes.
At a time, you can extend it. And that's kind of, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying with the Corpus, like, let's get their ideas and what they're kinda come up with, but we are a different ballgame in Corpus, we're a smaller community, we have residents, you know, they. They have better, bigger buildings, they have more permits, they're having a lot more, um, money going into their city, so I just, that's why I want different options. Yes, we can follow Corpus to a point, but like, we are a different ballgame, we're a whole different area, whole different client, you know, customer base, so I just, so I would like every option I possibly get.
Okay, can we put it on a workshop, y'all mind if we grab your, your time at some other part of the day to?
When you're ready to bring it, yes, that would, I would appreciate that.
Okay. I just wanna add, um, I think it's the focus on new development here though, not, I think the residents, they're doing very well with. Keeping consumption low at this time, right? So I don't wanna penalize, that's not the focus of this, is to, to go into those additional rates.
I, I, I think we're gonna run out of water if we do, because we're in a drought, uh, in Texas, not because we're using the water too much. That, I mean, that's just my thought, it's gonna be a Texas problem, we're just so happening way down in South Texas, so.
Just ideas proposed on.
Anything and everything that y'all figure out that we can help.
Um, and what costs the residents the least in that sense as well.
Thank you.
And what else? I'm number eleven, consider a presentation on the sale of the gas system.
Mayor and Council, I don't necessarily have a presentation, I just wanted to update you, um, we did put the system out for bid, which we've, we've brought to you before in executive session. Before, um, we went, went public with the purchaser. We are negotiating at this point with Corpus Christi Gas, it seems like they are going to be the best service to our, to our citizens. Um, than some of the private gas companies that bid, um, we're working with council member, Rundret's a part of that, so staff's not doing it in a vacuum. But we're hoping to have a contract from Corpus Christi. I think they said this week.
I think they wanna take it to, also at the end of this month.
Okay, they're gonna take it to their council at the end of this month, if their council approves it, then we'll bring that contract to you and then that's. Where you guys will have an option to take a swipe at it, but I'm happy to answer questions and I just wanted to put it on the record that we are negotiating with Corpus Christi Gas. They put in a very reasonable bid, but we've asked for a little bit more and there's some potential to lease some, some property with it, so we're trying to get the best value. Uh, before we put a pin in the, in the bulletin board, so, are there any questions on that?
Any others update?
Hey, I'll keep this simple. Texas highways, oh, sorry, this whole new microphone thing, Texas highways, y'all might recognize this cover. Y'all may wanna go grab one of these, that's us, we have, um, quite a few mentions in here, um, Texas Monthly, this is the. July twenty twenty five issue, so hot off the press, there's someone back here also that's not more, what is it, more than just a sleepy fishing village? So you might wanna grab that, um. We're getting our name out there, we're, we're doing a good job, staff's doing a good job. Um, so, grab these two things, there's a lot of other stuff to look for, there's a new website, of course, we have Nanette on, on staff, she's been on with, for, with us for a little while, but, um. It feels like it's been slow, but, but finally there's some momentum, so, that's it. Oh, big news, Thursday, big news, at the yacht club. Four o'clock, see y'all there. What'd I say?
Reports from council.
Today's Tuesday. Thursday, yeah. Um, I don't have anything specific to report, just want to, um, send my appreciation for everyone that worked so hard to get in here, it's beautiful, done a great job. Um, so, thank you again.
For Ward Two, uh, first of all, Kimberly, thank you, this is wonderful, a lot of other folks get thanks as well, I know Ryan's crew and, and many others, uh, uh, probably not, uh. Not enough to remember all their names, but everybody worked very hard, this is very nice, we're very fortunate, uh, to have this, and the citizens are as well, um, uh. Little bit of thank you, uh, I had the invitation to go ride in the boat parade, uh, the other day on July fourth, the Chief Anderson was kind enough to, uh. Uh, give, give me a lift in the boat, it was nice to go see all the folks, it seemed like it was a, a, a very good, a lot of tourists in town, I hope all the businesses, uh, capitalized on all that. I think everything went by safely and thank you for the invitation, um, but boat parade was very well attended and, uh, it was nice, I appreciate the invitation. Let's see, start with, uh, I think we had a pretty safe Fourth of July weekend, uh, it's been a while since we've had a Fourth of July on Friday, I think, ten or eleven years, so. That means the party started on Wednesday, ended on Monday, something like that, uh, so. Uh, anyway, good weekend in Rockport, uh, started Thursday night at the, the art festival, uh, that was very well attended, uh, I believe. I believe they're very happy with their, the money they, uh, were able to get from their, their auction items, uh, a good time there. Uh, moved into Friday for the boat parade, uh, that was fun, it's good to see, uh, both Chief Anderson and Councilman Anderson, Anderson out there, uh. They were not in their bikinis, uh, they, they were pretty good dressed, uh, you know, in uniforms and whatnot, uh. I was not in a bikini either, uh, but anyway, it was very, the boat parade was fun, uh, city was crowded, uh, as always on Fourth of July weekends. Um, moved into, let's see, what else, fireworks, beautiful, uh, thanks for the, the Wendell family, uh, another great time there. Um, and I'm just, I really hope that, uh, all the local businesses had a great weekend. I think they did, uh, and I too wanna thank Kimberly for all the hard work she did, uh, answering my questions, uh, letting me help her out some of these things here and, uh. Uh, I think council and citizens can be very proud of this, uh, this building and we are, we were very, very, very close to being on budget, uh. Using, what, what, what's our percentage over?
No, don't ask her, we're not done.
I know, we're really close, we're, we're.
We'll have a full report for you when everything is closed out.
We're all on budget using twenty twenty one dollars, so I'm very proud of that and I'm very proud of staff, working very, very hard to. Uh, to not manage dollars, to manage pennies, um, she's brutal and I just thank her for her hard work and all that, so thank you.
So I'll just sound the same, thank you, um, Grace facility, um, I mean, our meeting not going, went well and so, great job and. July fourth, it was busy in town, so I think everyone had a great time and thank you guys, uh, the police for keeping it safe and fireworks were gorgeous and, um, so I just pretty much second everything, everyone else is saying.
Thanks again, I told everybody I wanted to work and all, I said, thank you Kimberly and Vanessa, and. Everybody that's had a part getting this thing done, cause there were a lot of people put in a whole lot of hours and a lot of worry and, and a lot of sweat. And probably went to happy hour a lot or something, I don't know, but, but thank y'all, I love you so much and, and I, the people that I saw, which included some folks that were not exactly fond of the idea of a new city all the time, really liked the building. And it looks really nice, so we, we, we did, we did good, y'all did a great job overlooking it, so, I appreciate it. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
Sorry.
He, he didn't even breathe, he wasn't even, uh, appreciate it.
I was thinking over here too, I'm like, appreciate you guys.